And before we get started, anybody that signed up to speak for either one, there's a mark on either side here, up here, on either side of the table, on the floor. If you'll come up to here and speak, so that the microphones catch.
And this meeting is on YouTube?
Yes.
Want to?
Yeah, thank you. We're called to order the regular meeting of the Upson County Planning Commission for August 14th. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Vice Chair Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Murphy? Let it show that Mr. Murphy is not here?
Absent.
Absent. Okay. We have quorum, Madam Chair?
All right. Thank you. Item two, adoption of the minutes from the July 10th meeting. I believe you guys, everybody had those in your packets.
I'm making motion to adopt the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye. unanimous?
All right. Okay. Item three, old business, application for rezoning 2023-03 Michael Coe, 95 Knight Trail, parcel 057032. This is a continuation of the public hearing from our June 12th and July 10th meetings. So we will continue with that. I have those signed up to speak. Are you recusing? Okay. So I have Johnny Dawson to speak first. You don't have anything? Okay.
No.
Okay. But you're going to recuse yourself, correct? Okay. Michael Coe?
Nothing else to add.
Nothing else to add? Okay. Bobby?
He's not present.
He's not here? Okay. All right. So does anybody have any objections to closing the public hearing?
I don't.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Dawson is recusing himself from that. All right. So we, I'm taking it, we have no new information today that we didn't have?
No, you were either, your-
What we had June-
Your original continuation was, or of the public hearing was because you wanted to have the graphics. You were given those graphics. They're also in the presentation. So if you could certainly at least that discussion now that you've got the site plan and the elevations.
Had you guys, would you prefer to have the presentation first?
I would.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Now, I've got the full presentation. I'm going to guess you don't want the full presentation, just want the-
I just think the new stuff?
Just the new stuff.
Yeah.
So I do have all the information from the original staff report, but I did add the graphics. Yeah, those were not in this packet. They were in your last packet. Mr. Coe, certainly if the plan information has any questions to him, he's obviously the expert on these graphics. But what we have here, the very first one is the site plan, shows you approximately where that cleared area is, if you've been out there to look at that. So you can see sort of where it makes sense based on the site plan. You can see the outline of where the lake is, the orientation of the cross dock compared to the rest of the building, which would be the office, and potentially the retail space. And you do have the two driveways, which are out there now. And you've just got your elevation drawings here to give you an idea of what the materials look like, colors, et cetera. Floor plan. And what we call oblique drawings. Give you a different perspective. And sort of a graphic illustration of what it might look like from the front. So I'd be happy to go back to any of the graphics that you want to discuss and wherever you'd like to go from here, Madam Chair.
Any questions on that before we move into this? As far as what you just saw there?
I have no questions.
No? Okay. Last time, I know that we were talking, couple of notes that I had was the sign would be on the front of the building. It would be asphalt or concrete, if you weren't sure which. Lighting, you were going to have an EMC yard light at each corner of the building or the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. And fencing, we were waiting on civil engineer?
We were trying to do without fencing, just going to do a gate at the entrance, like a, we're looking at both options, but we're trying to avoid the fencing. I think it'll look better aesthetically if we just have a nice gate, like a-
Blocking both entrances?
Yes.
Okay. Any, anything that I missed in my notes?
No.
That we had, that we had talked about with that? Okay. Then considering those things we just discussed, do I have a motion that would incorporate
I guess the only question I got is concerned with the gate. We're going to put the condition on that, that he's going to have to have a gate or fence, or what are we going to do with that?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with either or. I'm going to tell you, I probably think you need to have a fence, but you'll come to that conclusion maybe down the road. But I'm okay with either one, but I'd like to make sure that anything that we do approve has the fence and/or gate condition, the lighting at each corner condition, sign being on the front of the building and it being concrete or asphalt, driveways. So, you know, I just want to make sure we get those, those items in there. Is there anything else that I'm missing?
Yeah, I think that covers.
I mean, that's all the notes I had from our, both our June meeting as well as the joint meeting.
Yeah, because I think the fence was the last issue that we discussed. So I'm good with either or. What about you, John? What do you think?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve it with the conditions with the gate or the fence. Asphalt, concrete driveway, sign on front of the building, and of course the yard lights at each corner.
And your landscaping, we talked about that, but you've got that on your-
He's got the landscaping.
That on there. So the landscaping per the diagram, I think. Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please. With those conditions.
Mr. Coe, the next move will be to go to the Board of Commissioners, the staff report having the meeting, I believe it's the 12th of September. Is that it? Or was it a later date than that?
Ah, September.
All right. It's in September. Once we get it advertised, the yellow signs will come back out again after they disappear and we'll go through this.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll leave me with something. Thank you.
Okay. Item four is new business, application for rezoning 2023-02 George L. Crook, 103 Bank Street, 12 lots, parcel 070A, 28 through 39 and 44, from R5 to AR, for the purpose of allowing agricultural use. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for this. Mr. Crook, I have you on the list. Do you have, or do you have anything to present?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you can come up to one of these marks here.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Thank y'all for seeing us today. We're looking to change it up to AR. When I purchased the property, I did not realize it was R5, undeveloped subdivision from 1972 is when it started. We were looking at the laws of the state and everything, but the subdivision has not been developed within five years. It ceased to exist and should be able to go back to the AR zone. Other things is, I've seen that we've been, when the chicken thing went into effect, we had over 300 chickens out there and I'd already built sheds up. We're down to about 60 to 70 chickens, I think, now. We've been selling them off and roosters, when they crowed at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, became chicken noodle soup the next day, or chicken and dolphins, because I don't like chickens and roosters hollering at night either. There's no neighbors on that end of the street that complain about it. Most of my neighbors help feed them and collect eggs. We've also been putting our extra hay that we have to sell out on the property. I've got a shed built out there, which I found out from Mr. Doug is against the ordinance too. Then we put our scrap lumber up. We also cleaned up subdivisions that are being established. We're going to clean that up, gather up the wood, and we reuse it, try to recycle it, resell it, whatever we need to do. Other than that, that's what we're doing. We're planning on putting a fence up around the 7.8 acres that are on Worthy Road and see about putting goats in there, eat that up. The land is just too hilly to really build anything on them. We spent $7,000 on a dozer work trying to level up the ground so we could put our hay equipment up there in front of my house. And the guy was telling us he probably wouldn't be able to get the septic tank and the well in to build a house on these lots that are there. And what I'd like to do, I have not been able to get a person to come out and resurvey the land for me, but I'd like to consolidate all those lots that are mentioned. The ones that are not mentioned, we should be able to build houses on them, but that would be in town. And that's about it.
So help me, help me understand, this may be you too, Doug. What we see in red is the subdivision?
Yes.
That's right?
And the R5.
And the R5, right. But what's in blue is just these lots?
Only the ones that are subject to, he actually owns five more lots that aren't subject to rezoning?
Okay. I just want to make sure I was looking at the red and thinking-
The blue part is what we're discussing.
The blue part is what we're discussing.
Correct.
Yes. But the red is the whole R5 subdivision? Okay.
We want to combine all those lots together and I believe it come up right over 18 acres all together.
So-
And we'll be right next to the AR and Mr. Johnny up on the, on the end of Worthy. He was okay with it, but he didn't want to come to the meeting. But I can't speak for him.
So these lots, these lots, and all of these lots are buildable lots. Is that correct? Touching the blue line, but outside of yours.
Three of them have already been developed.
Okay.
I used to live at 87 Bank Street. Tracy Baldwin lives next door to that one. And then on the corner, my brother owns that, where the A-frame house is at. And then all the way on the end would be Mr. Carroll. He owns that. They have requested that we didn't put any goats up there by his place.
Okay.
But it was just a request. Of course, we're not going to be anywhere near his house. You got two, three, four, five lots before we hit his house.
Any other?
You mentioned 12 lots, I believe.
Okay.
Total.
Eleven small ones and then the great big one.
Okay. So there's 12.
Most of those lots, if you go down to the bottom of it, you're anywhere from 60, 60 to 32 foot drop from the front.
And what's going, you, let me, let me get this straight if I can. Your lots, your property is 14 through 36, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're going to encompass with what you want to, you've asked us to do, you're going to have 12 lots, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Consolidating.
Say again?
We're going to get a resurvey and put it all, single acreage for that one house on 103 Bank Street.
Okay. So that essentially is your lots numbered 26 to 36, and you're going to take out some of the 14 to the 18, 19 to add to that?
I don't have those numbers on here. We ran it the same problem. I've got one number, my numbers were opposite from this one. Mr. Doug-
If you look at page two of the staff report, what I did is I went by what we use every day, which is the Tax Math number. I guess you guys are referring to the subdivision designations?
Yeah.
You got lots circled.
Yeah.
But you're looking at 12 lots?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And combining them all, getting it surveyed, getting it all resurveyed, just like the Worthy Road was all surveyed, 7.8 acres, I believe, 7.83 or 8.5.
Okay.
I don't have none at the moment.
Okay. John?
I mean, other than just fencing it off, we've got something cleared up, that's your only-
We've got the, I think there's pictures in here of the chicken pens already, they've been already built. They were built before I found out that-
But I mean, other than additional livestock or anything like that?
We're not looking for anything but goats and chickens. We've got turkeys and ducks.
And your hay equipment? You cut hay at other properties?
Yes, sir. I only own the 25 acres there, as you see, is all I own. I've been cutting hay for over 40 years and it's just one of those things you just can't get out of your system. It's very therapeutic. Very frustrating right now because it's raining.
Is there an issue with his own bar with the setback?
Oh, well, the only issue that I'm aware of would be the chickens in the buildings there, but we couldn't discuss that. The goats, you know, free ranging goats or even pen goats is not a problem based on code, but chicken pens, houses, whatever we want to call them, are a problem.
No one has complained yet. Doesn't take long.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. I have someone else signed up. Sir, I can't, I can't read.
Michael Chapman?
Chapman?
Yes.
Okay. If you would come up here, state your name and address, please.
Michael Chapman, 121 Worthy Road. Question. You say you want to put animals there. And you say you're going to fence it in, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I got the impression that he wanted, where he put the sign, it was on Worthy, where the 7.3 or 7.8 acres you have down there, like I said, a house, if you wanted to put a house, that's fine. I was thinking he was going to come through with a road from the backside up to that point. That's what my impression was, when you put the sign there. You had banks, you had Worthy, Basin, Sherman right there. That's what I'm thinking. So since he's going to put the animal there, that's fine. I don't have no complaint. I take that objective to it. But the thing about it though, if he's going to have goats there, you said goats now.
Yes, sir.
Nobody goats get away now. They eat anything.
Yes, sir. If you have a problem, you come see me and we'll fix it.
Since you said it that way, I understand that. I appreciate that. But when it comes like the chickens, you know, with chickens, then do that.
Yes, sir.
They unfly, gunning, nest on beautiful cars and everything else.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, right there, I don't have no problem with them. But I was, I was impressed when I heard it this morning, when I called, he said, for animals.
All right.
Mr. Pitts, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Do you remember me?
Yeah, I do.
I remember you too.
But that's one thing.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope you did that, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll see you. I'll see you.
So with that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get your staff report, please?
Absolutely. This is a summary of the written staff report. I will not be discussing everything in the staff report. Certainly there are copies available. For those who don't have copies, this is just the summary. So as you've heard, Mr. Crook has the, and I misspelled his name there, Mr. Crook, has requested basically consolidation of these 12 parcels and then granting the rezoning. As you heard earlier, these are part of the Hillsdale State subdivision in 1972. That was obviously not built out. Now agriculture, which is what he's requested, is listed in AR as a permitted use, agriculture excluding commercial poultry and swine. So we're going to get into that discussion because the agriculture, the goats you've heard about are fine, but when you come to the chickens, we have a special ordinance which is attached to your, attached to your staff report, and we'll get into that a little bit. All right. So the total is approximately 18.12 acres. These lots can be combined on the property, as you see in the photos, there's some heavily wooded part of the property. There's a single family home, a large chicken coop. There were approximately 50 chickens in it. As you know, in the R5, that's inconsistent with the recently approved zoning ordinance, specifically the animal ordinance that was adopted. There's various sheds, there's a very large lumber or wood debris pile, miscellaneous building parts on the property, and some heavy farming equipment and some trailers. The property is on three streets, Bank Street, excuse me, two. And we'll get into that Bank Street and Worthy Drive. I got a phone call from the road department today, Sherman Drive, though it shows up on the drawings and on the tax assessor's website, doesn't exist as a private street and it doesn't exist as a public street. So while it shows on the plat and is currently on the tax assessors, there is no Sherman Drive, so we don't really need to be too concerned about that. And the only property that fronts on it is Mr. Crook's property anyway, so it's not a problem. The small lots, the 11 to be combined, are associated with that larger 7.33 acre lot. And you'll see in the staff report where each one of those lots is individually called out and listed. We had questions earlier about the location. This is between what I called the Tri-Cemetery Smith Road area. So it's between Tri-Cemetery Road and Wind Sweep off of Smith, just south off of Smith. Now, the code violations that I found when I was out there, of course, the existing chicken coop itself and the number of chickens, we had had a couple of conversations in the office with Mr. Crook, so he was certainly aware of this. I'm not sure, we had not had a discussion about the chicken ordinance. So as you see in the staff report, we're not really told what sort of animals are going to be part of this. So as we heard, the goats aren't really a problem, but we do have a very specific chicken house and swine house ordinance that requires some very significant setbacks. And those are attached to your staff report. And I, I did not do the exact measurements. Maybe Mr. Crook has an idea, but I really don't think even the property as it would be changed, would be enough property to accommodate a chicken coop, a chicken house that is commercial. Now again, if it's just, you know, hobby type of thing, our ordinance doesn't talk about hobby chickens, but it's very specific when it comes to commercial chickens and commercial swine. So that's something that basically, I think the only thing that would resolve that issue would be additional property to be allowed, those distances, there's setbacks that you'll see from property lines of the property itself, setbacks from other buildings, residential buildings other than his own, and there's also setbacks from any residentially zoned property. Well, we've got, R5 is right there. So he's going to have to get, you know, in order to have chicken houses, he's going to have to have some significant, probably additional property.
Commercial chicken house?
Commercial chicken house.
Not, not what he's got today?
I'm unaware of what happens with the chickens or their eggs right now. I don't know.
Yeah.
There is in the photos, you'll see accumulation of trash and debris, which certainly are eligible as code violations. The surrounding property, you can see it's very heavily wooded, the single family residences are fairly scattered, and the two zoning districts are the R5, which is the subdivision, the part that is developed and the part that isn't, and then AR surrounds the subdivision. As you know, there are general review guidelines required by the state of Georgia that you must consider in evaluating the proposal, as does the board commissioners, and these are those standards. We also have, and this is fairly new, we'll try to get into more detail as we go through. I will summarize this, but we now have an adopted comprehensive plan and it's a little more robust and has some policies and a map that we aren't familiar with prior to the adoption of the plan. One of those is the character areas. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but basically every parcel in the county has a character area where basically this is where it should go, this is where it is. So what is the character of this particular area? The particular character area is probably not a surprise based on the configuration and the original plan for this property is- and the original plan for this property, is residential. That's the, the plan on the character map. So, if you abide strictly by that, it doesn't have room for AR. You can see the list on the staff report where the acceptable zoning districts on this residential character area properties are, 1, 2, 4, 5, and the PR. This is a guideline. It's not a regulation, so it's supposed to be a guideline for this body, as well as the board commissioners, as to the direction of the use of property countywide in the unincorporated area. We also have a couple of goals and strategies that deal with agricultural activity and conflicts, and that we want to have low density around these type of agricultural uses. Those are the goals and strategies that are in the comp plan. This is one thing that I think the application was not spelled out. He didn't tell us exactly what the agricultural activities were going to be. We've heard goats and chickens here today. That wasn't in the application, if there's anything else planned. How many? That sort of thing, in terms of what the impact's going to be. All right, so we're going into the staff analysis. Again, we didn't have a lot of detail about this particular use and what's going to happen, but some characteristics of the use is where it is, and it is what I'd call the back end of the subdivision. Nobody has to drive by this property to go somewhere else, you know, church or school, anything. It's at the back end. It's at two dead ends, not the respective streets. So, it is somewhat isolated, even though there are developed lots in the subdivision. There are no other agricultural uses in the immediate vicinity that are at least commercial. You do have the lots of, lots of open area and the woods, however. So, then the concern for the neighborhood would be based on whatever volume of agriculture happens here and what type of agriculture. Obviously, that comes with odor, noise, visual, and traffic impacts that haven't happened up to this point, except for the chickens that are there now. And we talked about this, but the character area designation here is residential, which is suitable for the R5, but not the DAR, is based on the new comp plan. And of course, in the R5, the chickens weren't allowed, except as hobby chickens. Even before, there was an ordinance. Of course, now, parcel by parcel, it would be limited to no more than 10 with no roosters. But you have heard that he's been winnowing the flock for a while. These are those standards that we talked about, that have been part of your review for a very long time. Basically, they deal with the impacts to the environment and to the neighbors. We've sort of discussed that already. Obviously, with agriculture, you can have odors and traffic with farm equipment and potentially noise from the animals, if that's the type of use. So, those are the impacts that may or may not impact, depending on how close they are to the neighbors, and the characteristics of those things. But we don't really know until it's happened, although we have an indication, depending on what the size of the flock, the amount of goats, the number, where they are placed, are they penned, are they free roaming, et cetera, that sort of information. So, staff recommendation. Number one, there's got to be a condition if you're going to approve this. Currently, we don't have, this property's not meant combined. So, you've got, and part of what delayed this with Mr. Crook was that when he came in with his application, he wanted to go to AR. Well, the minimum lot size in AR is two acres, and all of these are either under an acre or they're just slightly over an acre. So, obviously, those lots have to be combined. I presume that he wanted to wait until he found out the outcome of this process, as long as the planning commission and the board commissioners go along with that, that, you know, the use for agriculture in AR couldn't happen until the property has actually been legally combined, et cetera. So, you'll see that the first condition is the language that I suggested. If the planning commission is going to recommend approval, that this combination, this replating of the property and a new job, a new description, legal description of the property, happen before any activity happens due to any rezoning. Based on the current ordinance, then number two, we get into the commercial chicken and swine issue. Again, here are the setbacks. If you're going to have a chicken house, a swine house, you have to be 200 feet from all property lines with that house, 1,000 feet from all existing houses, except for your own, and then 2,600 feet from any residentially zoned districts. Well, we have R5 right there. And again, I, you know, I have to ask Mr. Coe. I don't believe he's got with the current property, even when it's reconfigured. I don't think he has those distances for any chicken houses, swine houses, whatever might go in there. So, we have an issue at least with the chickens, because we know he's got chickens now. So, that's something that would have to be accommodated or prohibited. So, right now, without more information, I just recommend that, you know, chicken or swine can't be part of the equation because we don't see the distances. I don't think there's adequate property to have either swine or chickens in a commercial. Now, as was referenced earlier, if they're hobby chickens, this is AR, and we don't have any regulations about that. But once they become commercial chickens, either because of their meat or their eggs or their reproducing other baby chickens, that's not a commercial operation. We have concerns about that, based on our, our ordinance. So, therefore, again, you've got my recommendations. There's certainly reasons to recommend approval, and there are reasons to recommend denial. For approval, the fact that this is basically an out-of-the-way location, even though it's part of a subdivision, nobody has to regularly drive by it or be directly affected to it, since it's their next-door neighbor, but they don't travel through this area. There is the factor that this is a 1972 subdivision that still hasn't built out. So, obviously, you know, okay, it's not being used for houses. Maybe it can be put to a more practical or current use that is viable. And then, he may be able to have the chickens that he wants if he adds property, and there's certainly lots of additional property around there if it were to be added. Now, the reasons for denial, of course, you've got, what we'll get to in the photographs, is the code violations that are present there. This is an established, flat, flatted subdivision. It's already been laid out. There are the agricultural impacts. You've got odor, noise, traffic, the main negatively impact, and there are neighbors. There are not a lot of them. They're kind of separated out, but there are neighbors. Now, they can be buffered, and a proper buffer might be a reason for you to, you know, think, think that the impacts might be less. We also have the factor that technically, this rezoning request is not consistent with your brand-new newly-adopted residential character area map. It doesn't fit within the residential district that we have on our character areas. And I believe that satisfies the text. Okay, going into the graphic. Here's the aerial. So, once again, you can see the area of the neighborhood that's being included. Banks is the one that comes straight out of the northern portion. Sherman is that little dead end that curls over to the east, which doesn't exist. We don't need to worry about it. It's on his property. It's part of his property. The road department doesn't even recognize it as a private road, let alone a county road. All right, so here's the zoning in the area. You can basically see that subdivision, what is in red is R5, and then the AR surrounds this area. And as you pointed out, the blue, the black, towards the southern end, is the property. And that's where you see that there are 11 of the individual lots that are going to be combined. And then you have that larger lot off to the east, which is the frontage on Worthy that would be combined. Now, technically, it wouldn't have to be combined into the rest of them. It could be separate, but if he includes, is going to include them all together in one, that's fine too. But obviously, at seven acres, it is a sufficient size on its own. All right, we're going to the photos. This is the single residence that is on the property, the one and only. This is the house that's to the north. I believe this is his brother's house. This is the equipment that he's got across. He owns these lots. These are the cleared lots that you saw in the aerial. This is some of the equipment that he's got parked there. All right, and this is just to the south of the house, driveway, and some of the structures that are on the property. This is basically the dead end where Banks Street ends. Now, this debris you see really is technically a code violation. I mean, if it was in a barn or stored somewhere neatly, but because it's sort of strewn about, you know, if this were, well, anyway, it could be cited as a code violation. And the conditions of these sheds, et cetera. And then again, if this is for use, it probably would be better stored somewhere, but this is definitely a code violation, that something needs to be done with. And then this is the chicken house that still exists. And yes, there, as Mr. Crook said, I don't know. I counted approximately 50 after that. I said, well, that's close enough. And of course, they thought that I was going to be feeding them, so they start to come out. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions?
I got some questions. If you sign them back. Should I speak now or?
Yeah, the public hearing is already closed.
I signed a paper. Can you hear my name?
I have Michael Chapman and George Crook.
There must have been another paper I signed. Are you going to sign some papers?
That was the "I'm here" paper.
Oh.
I thought that part of this was far.
So, yeah, so we closed the public hearing, so we can't open that back up for comments from the public.
I just have some questions.
Well, I tell you, just let's wait, listen to our questions back and forth, and we may answer something that you have. Okay? Go ahead.
I have just, one of the questions I have is, you mentioned, I believe, that you're going to replat this piece of property.
Yes, sir.
When will that happen?
As soon as I can get a guy up there to do it.
As soon as you can?
Yes, sir.
I would really like to see it platted.
I agree.
What you've said, and there's also some question as to how you're going to deal with the chicken part of it. I'm not, you know, when you start to talk about that, you're looking at 200-foot setback, and I don't think you can meet that with what you have now.
That's not commercial chickens. Houses, I ran chicken houses before. I don't want to do it again. No more than 300 chickens.
Okay, and what's the minimum size of that chicken house going to be?
That, that one that's there is 13 foot wide, 18 foot long, and there's two of them.
13?
40 foot. It's 40 foot by 14 wide.
Say again?
40 foot by 14 wide.
And there's two of them like that?
I got two of them side by side. So, it's four, it's two sheds, 20 and 20. It's 40 foot.
The total?
Oh, it's the total is 14.
Total is that one, right. It's two pens in there. The only thing we have that is for the hawks and the coyotes. The fence around it's 120 foot by 20, encaged.
That would encompass the chicken business that you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Give me those numbers again.
14 feet wide and 40 feet long.
Okay, I got that.
So, you have no plans to sell chickens or eggs?
We do. We sell chicken and eggs, yes.
So, that becomes a commercial?
We've been, we've been moving them over to Milner.
You what?
We've been moving our chickens over to Milner, so we can sell the eggs at our store, Brother's Trading House.
You're moving it?
I mean, meansfully, excuse me.
So, you're going to, you're going to discontinue the chicken business?
We want to keep it, right where we're at.
Well, you just said you were moving it to Milner.
We were moving them because we were under code violation, and I didn't want to get them, I didn't want to get them.
So, you're still under code violation?
Correct, right.
And you're?
We're slowly moving them over.
How, okay. So, how long is it going to take to, 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 to serious? You know, I have some questions.
About the chickens, moving them?
Well, yeah, you're telling me you're going to move them all to Milner.
We've been moving them over there, but now that land over there's come up for sale, so we're going to end up having to do something else with them. So, we'll probably end up after some law, we can't put them back over there on our place. I was trying to get in within code. The pile of debris was brought to my attention. We're going to dig a hole and bury it. That's a burn pile. That's a burn. You can't burn it. You have to bury it.
That would be a violation of state law, because that's treated wood.
Treated wood.
That would not be something that you want to do.
We don't burn it. We don't burn it and let it rot, because we've got a lot of, lot of hills in there that we've got to fill up, which is going to cause problems later. But if we have, if we have 10 chickens per lot, we can get away with it, right? So, we, all our lots, we can put 10 chickens on every lot with a fence, and then we can get away with that. As, we still can't sell the chickens, because we're not AR. There's not hot eggs.
The reason you haven't had it resurveyed and combined is you're waiting to see if.
We'll wait to see if we can get her.
To see if we're going to, we're going to approve it, rezoning to AR.
Yes.
I can understand on a monetary situation, and I wouldn't want to spend the money to have it, you know, resurveyed. It'd just be a condition, you know, that if we do, I'm just saying, if we did, the condition would, before it could be finalized, that, that, that was in place, you know? That would be part of the condition. So, I mean, I can understand not spending the money until he gets an answer on that part of it.
Yeah.
The chickens has got to be figured out before it's properly set, it's.
When we talk about the violations that you, when will you have that, when will you mitigate that? When will you satisfy what we need to get you out of that code violation?
Well, we'll have it taken care of next week. We'll put 10 chickens on every piece of property that we got. One thing we can do, and you've also got the extra equipment that's out there, all the wood that's out there. All, all those violations have got to be taken care of too.
The equipment's not, the equipment's not a violation, is it?
Oh, it's not?
No.
The equipment's not, technically, not a violation. It's just the debris.
We'll move, we'll move the stuff to the landfill. We'll move all the piles to the landfill then.
I'll be satisfied with that.
There was also some conversation about you were going to add some other properties to this somehow. Is that, did I understand that?
We wasn't planning on it, no.
No, he just said if they were.
There were additional lots that they wanted.
If they were going to go to a commercial, like, it wasn't, they were planning on it, was that, it could be a possibility.
You're going to, you're going to replat this piece of property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when will that be available?
As soon as I can get the, uh.
He's not going to do that unless we approve it.
He's making sure that we approve, so it'll have to be a condition of that.
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't spend the money without.
I'll, do my best to have it done before, before and then, I don't remember. Shouldn't be a problem getting it done by then, I don't think. I have had a piece of property surveyed at a lot. Last guy used some scary stuff, and he's no longer with us. I had a guy that was going to do it for me, but he got tied up doing other stuff over on the inside of the, uh, mansion, and he wasn't able to. I was hoping to get a proposal, get it done up, have a proposal there.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay, um, anything else? Anybody, Joe?
No, I don't have anything.
So, just so we're all clear, you want to combine all those into one, one piece of property?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to have. You want to have up to 300 chickens?
No more than 300, correct.
Okay.
And 40 feet.
And you want to be, you want to be able to sell those chickens and the eggs?
Mainly the eggs.
Which becomes a commercial chicken operation? So, how do you guys want to, do we want to address some of this so they know what they are going to get and not going to get, but make it conditional, not conditional, but subject to coming back to us with a plat?
Yes.
I'd like to see a plat. I really would want to see a plat. I just don't have time.
Do we want to address the chicken thing so that they have full, they understand what we're...
Yeah, we're kind of splitting that. I guess splitting hairs a little bit on the commercial side of whether we thinking about, you know, that it's a big chicken house or he's just selling eggs. But, I mean, one can go, one can go either direction, you know?
I'm just going by the letter of what we have.
I know, I know. I'm just saying what we're trying to do is what he's trying to say in what this is just so we, he needs to be clear, absolutely clear what's...
That's what I, that's, I don't want him to go and pay for survey and not understand what we're willing to do or not do on the other...
I'm with you, I'm with you completely.
Okay.
They're fully on the same page.
I can tell you now, the debris, it needs to be hauled off to the landfill, not buried, not burned. It needs to be hauled off.
We've got piles out there with the trees that were knocked down. That pile came from what we had left over from Crook Brothers Trading Post. We were rebuilding things, and we just didn't have time to take it to the landfill. But I was going to bury it out there, but if you say we need to, we'll take it over there.
Yeah.
We'll take it to the landfill.
I would take it to the landfill, because we don't, we have no way of knowing what's in.
Correct. All that is, there's not any pressure-treated lumber in that. It's mainly skids that we recycled from McDonald's, stuff like that. Worst case scenario is the nails in it.
I would prefer it all just to be taken to landfill. That's why.
Technically, anything other than hand-stacked limbs, you know, any processed wood is not supposed to be, you know?
Correct.
Burned, burned or buried, where it's not necessarily pressure-treated, but it's been processed.
Processed.
It's been milled, and it's not supposed to be...
I've never understood that.
It's not supposed to be burned or buried.
Okay.
Why the 300, why is it 300, you're managing them?
We want to donate the eggs to the Upson County School System. They were asking for help for this year.
I don't believe we can do that.
We have a county license. We got a county license to do it.
They were asking for local farmer's...
We were going to supply the eggs for them for this school year.
You have a license?
Yes. Crook, Crook Brothers Trading, I mean, Crook's farm's got county licenses. That's why we were going to move our chickens up more so we can supply them, because we're losing money on that.
So, you're selling the eggs to the school?
Donating them to the school.
Donating them to the school.
Yeah. They didn't offer pay.
Do you have, do you, I was about to say, if you got them to pay you for them, that's a good deal. Do you have an agreement with them?
Not yet. We're waiting to get this through right here and make sure we can hold them there.
We have an email from them asking us to, they've started some kind of program with the local farmers, Hummingbird Farms does it, and they asked us if we could partner with them and help the school system out, but the kind of volume that we would have to have, we don't have, you know, we couldn't...
We can't do it with our 50 chickens. We need to jump up to 300.
How are you going to justify this and keep your business up, and keep this running if you're going to give all the eggs away?
Word of mouth.
I mean, word of mouth, if you're giving all your chickens away, how's that?
I might give them all, or still sell them, I'm still selling some, too. Then I'll take that off the loss of all my business.
Personally, I don't think I have enough information to make a solid vote on this. I really don't.
So, what do we need, what do you want from the guests, my, what do we need to ask them?
You're looking for a plat to confirm what's included in that?
The chicken thing is, that's wide open, based on what I see.
But it looks, in order to get the 200 feet off the property line, I'm going to have to move that chicken pen up on the other side of the hill and level that side off. And that's on the way we're going to be 200 feet from each side of the property line. But those are free-range chickens. We let them out every day around 11 o'clock, 11, 12 o'clock. But as you can see, there's really no houses close enough for them to bother, but...
Looking for suggestions, how you want to handle it.
Final decision would be, you know, with a plat, that would be stipulation for the file on it, you know, that if everything else was met, then that could be, it could be approved with that plat. But then you've got to come up with the conditions for the chickens and...
How, where in this diagram right here is the chicken coop?
It'd be the bottom right-hand corner. Can't remember that. Right in there.
In the big...
No, ma'am. Go back down on the other side. Right in there.
Right in here?
Yes, ma'am.
So, on the one up, right here on the bore, you're saying slightly under the R in property?
Right above it.
You're saying this one right here?
Hold on. No, ma'am, come around.
The R in property, see the word property?
Right, yeah, go over a little bit more right down there.
Just right up in there.
Go to your right.
To my right?
Yeah, right up in there, a little bit further over. Right in there.
So, how far is it from this line right here?
I haven't measured it.
50 feet?
It's more than 50 feet. There's a 40-foot drop-off down there on that end. It's hard even to get around.
On this side?
Yes, ma'am. Well, where the straight line comes in on the back of that property? I didn't add it on to the 7.8 acres.
But you don't, you don't own this one?
I own that, I own that. No, ma'am, I don't own that one.
You don't own these, right?
No, ma'am. The gentleman that owns, he owns one, two, three, the fourth one up on that side, Mr. Johnny, he owns that.
That's my daddy.
That's him?
Mm-hmm. Broncy, Broncy, Philip.
Philip?
Yeah.
I'm having names.
It's okay. Yeah, he owns all the way around 3/4 of Culbessack on Hardy.
Yeah, he just didn't want me to develop it. He didn't want houses on that.
So, where's your house?
My house is over there where, right there above the case.
Where Sherman Road is.
Right there, where Sherman Road's supposed to be, there's, yeah, right there.
Right here.
Right, right there.
Okay. And this right here is where all your equipment is?
No, it's on the other side, straight across, in those two lots right there. Right there. Right there.
Okay.
Is it possible for you to locate those chicken, those chicken pens 200 feet?
Yes, sir.
And would you give the 200 feet clearance?
Yes, sir.
Is this land right here flat?
No, ma'am.
No.
That's worse than the outside.
And all around above it.
He owns the corner of Banks and Worthy. Where the R5 is at?
Yeah.
That's where he owns, right on this side of the big plot.
On the big plot.
The big one.
Down, down here, on here.
It's three lots, actually.
Yeah.
I don't know why they got it like that.
It's what it was rezoned. It's what you had to re-survey.
All right.
I don't have nothing to support this at all.
Okay. So, let me, let me just throw this out to you guys, so...
Ask Sam what place to get mine?
Mm-hmm. I would like to continue the public hearing for the next meeting. I would like to see that the building material remnants, all that has been cleaned up, evidence that that is gone.
Our violation.
Yep. Doug, I would ask you to help us verify that before the next meeting.
Yes.
I also, my thoughts are, if you're going to have 300 chickens, you need to move that 200 feet away from the line. We need to know where that's going to be moved and be able to tell us off of a plat. It may not be one plat, but off of a plat, wherever you're moving it, we should be able to tell that's more than 200 feet. And we should be able to see the number of feet on a different piece...
Yes.
...property and get a good idea that it's 200 feet away from our property line.
I'm good with that.
I'm good. Yes.
So, we will have to, you've got to reopen it.
So, do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Unanimous, thank you.
Yes. So, we'll reopen the public hearing, continue this till next time, till the September meeting?
11.
September 11th.
My birthday, I don't know.
Please let Mr. Courier know when the remnants, building material remnants are gone. He will come out there, inspect that. Please bring a plat showing measurements to his office.
A plat, I want a plat.
Right, but it won't be the one combined all or one lot, but bring, I'm sure when you bought this, you got a plat that has all the measurements on this. Okay. So, what I want you to do is on that plat, figure out where you're going to put your chicken coop.
Yes, ma'am.
200 feet from any property line. Bring that back to Mr. Courier's office so he can verify that, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Then, at our next meeting, we have those things...
Satisfied.
Satisfied, then we can look at taking a vote on this, okay? But that would, the violation that you're in with the chicken coop right now, that would satisfy that, the building remnants, that would satisfy that. So, those, I think, are the first two things in good faith that we've got to address. Any, anything else?
I'm good with those two.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Good with that? Okay. And if you guys aren't sure or whatever, please reach out to Mr. Courier, because we want him to see it before that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for answering all our questions. And sir, if you come back next time, be sure to sign up and...
I see numbers part of the standard, you know?
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just telling you, next time, you'll have two places to sign up. One that you're here and another one that you want to speak, okay?
I was just, can I ask you one question? I mean, I'm just wanting...
Sure, we reopen the public hearing, sure. Can you come up here and sign this for me? Johnny, let him sign that. Put your name and address, phone number.
And each phone number.
Okay, if you'll stand right here at this mark, Tim, if you'll just state your name and address for us, just so we have it on record, and let us know what you, what your question is.
Tim on the, I live at 15 Banks Street, own tracks 20, 21, 22.
Okay. All right, what was your question?
All right, you know, I've got nothing against anybody, you know, but in this, I've lived out there for 35 years. I've always got loan for one neighbor, but we always try to live and live, of course, but if this goes through, that means that anybody else can come in there and do their thing. If you change its code to agriculture, that means me or anybody else could get them some chicken.
They would have to go through the same, same process.
Even if you change it?
No, that's only changing his, his property.
Oh, okay.
That's not changing everybody's.
I see that's some question.
That's only changing the lots that he has specified in his request.
And you're talking about, you know, selling the chickens. I'm just wondering, is there going to be chicken truck coming up down the street?
No.
You know, feathers, plant, and all. Now, this, it's just concern.
That's the concern?
You know, and...
He's not going to have a full-fledged Purdue chicken house out there. What he has right now, my understanding, is what you're going to have, you're just going to place it 200 feet from a property line.
For eggs.
So, if you haven't seen it yet by now, you're not going to see it.
And we're talking about Sherman, I've never seen a Sherman drive. At the end of Banks, hey, no Culbessack, it's just dead end.
It was never developed. It was not developed. It was never developed. That's the reason I'm saying.
So, it was, it was in the plans to do it.
The original plat, but the subdivision didn't develop from 1972.
I knew I never had, I kept thinking Sherman, and we don't even know if it's 15 Banks Street or Banks Road. It's been debated for 35 years and...
Did you get your mail? Don't worry about it.
Those way, that's all it matters.
Long as you get your mail, don't worry about it, Tim.
I never heard of a street out in the country.
Yeah, we're good, as long as you get your mail.
Yep.
Well, that makes me all, I had, you know, like I said, I'm all for somebody, you know, but I understood you were going to come down Banks Street and put a road all the way around to come back out on Worthy. That's what I thought we were here for. I don't think you're back.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're clear on what we, what we need?
Yes, ma'am, I'm glad this is true.
Okay. Then we will see you guys September the 11th. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Now? Alright, so. Now we are number three, or, well, that's not three, number wrong. Number five, where other business, there is none. Uh, number six, planning commissioner issues and announcements. Anybody have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Item seven, secretaries issues and announcements.
Yes, just some very brief ones. You know most of this, but I just wanted to make sure it's officially part of the record. Um, the comprehensive plan, which that effort started back in October of last year. Uh, the board commissioners have now formally adopted the comprehensive plan. That's why you will start to hear it a little bit more in reference to some of these staff reports. We haven't received the official letter back from the Department of Community Affairs, but, um, we just need to button that last detail up that it has been adopted. See you five years from now and we'll start all over again. Rezoning twenty twenty-three dash zero one, never made it to a public hearing this board, because as you may be aware, she postponed twice.
Yeah.
And then when I asked her, because she had postponed by request to this meeting, I eventually did get an email that, um, basically said she was withdrawing her application, but just for your education and anybody may ask you, there needs to be certain about certain things. Number one, she can come back, she would have to reapply. And as a matter of fact, her email did say that she might come back next year and reapply, so, um, we could, you know, have to have this before you at that time. And then what she was applying for was for purposes of a commercial daycare. Similar to the conversation we just had. If it's a home-based daycare, it can still happen in that house. Now, there, we have several rules that, um, reign over, uh, home-based businesses, including a daycare. And that would be that people may, must live there in that house. They can't hire outside people and they can't use more than a certain percentage of the house for the daycare. It's gotta be primarily, primarily residents and the rest can be the daycare space. So it's not that the daycare can't be open now, it's just a commercial daycare can't be open. Uh, and then there's still the issue, of course, of the state license, whether it's a residential daycare, commercial, you still have to have your license from the state.
Is she living there?
I, I don't believe anyone's leaving there. I don't.
I was gonna say, last time I went by, I don't think anybody was there.
Whenever I drive by, I don't see a car on any regular occasion being there. So that was, you know, one of the discussions we had early on was, uh, whether it was gonna be home-based or commercial. And obviously, when she, uh, applied for the rezoning, she wanted it to be commercial. Alright, so that's, um, number two. And then the last is that the next board commissioner meeting is next week and your postponement ordinance will go to that, um, public hearing at that time, so. I gotta do a little introductory email to go with the draft ordinance that I came up with and get that for them. But you can anticipate that'll be before the board commissioners next Tuesday. That concludes, um, my issues and announcements, my action.
Alright.
I'm, I might mention one thing on that piece property. You know, I, I own that piece property.
Okay.
I own a piece property. The, the problem with that piece property that I see is that it's zoned or, but it's taxed highway transitional. My, I paid the property taxes on that piece property before I sold it. The price that I got for that piece property and taxes was eight hundred dollars. I paid eight hundred dollars tax. And I, I tried one time previously, years ago, when I first bought that piece of property, to get it changed from highway transitional. But, and I never was able to do that. So that's, that's, that's one of the things that's wrong with all of that property that she owns at. Is the lot that she bought and built her house on, taxes on that piece property was highway transitional. Mine was, and so was Johnny Buppington's, who owned the southern part of what I sold the lady. Plus some that is across that entrance road to that subdivision. That's crazy.
That's a question for the camp, for the tax commissions.
Do what?
That's, that's a question for the tax commissions.
Uh, have you ever appeared before?
Yeah, I, I, I have talked to them several times.
What kind of answer did you give?
I've talked to them several times.
I know, yeah.
We're still on air.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem with that piece property is, and I don't, I don't know, you know, the lady asked me. I didn't advertise the property. She looked at, I, I don't know how she got in touch with me, but she asked me if I'd sell the property and I said yes. And I paid the taxes on it and I know it was eight hundred dollars and it's zoned the highway transitional.
Well, it's not zoned that, it may be taxed that.
I'm sorry, I, I.
The tax, yeah, tax assessors have the.
Yeah, it's taxed. And, and I don't understand how you can do that. If it's zoned R, how can you? Move it right on.
Alright, on that note, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Six forty-five. He's turning off the.